Forum sponsored by The Courier, UFTV, the AAUW Finley Chapter, and 1330 WFIN. I'm WFIN News Director Doug Jenkins. This is Steve Dillon from The Courier. We'll be serving as tonight's co-moderators. Now, tonight's forum gives you a chance to find out more about the people running for Hancock County Commissioner on the Republican primary in May of 2018. Steve and I have selected the questions for tonight's forum and no candidate is aware of what they'll be asked or any of the order the questions would be in. The format for the forum consists of a two-minute opening statement by each candidate as well as a two-minute closing statement by each candidate. Now, in between the statements, we'll be asking both candidates a variety of questions and each candidate will have one minute to answer. If Steve or I feel that there's a follow-up needed, the candidate will have one minute to follow up that question. And if a candidate calls their opponent into question during their response, their opponent will have a chance at a one-minute rebuttal as well. We'll take a two-minute break near the midpoint of this evening's forum as well. Our participants this evening are Tim Bechtel and Paul Crone. And before tonight's forum, we did flip a coin to determine who would give the first opening statement. Paul, you won, and the floor is now yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Doug, Steve, Dillon, Commissioner Bechtel, listeners and viewers. I am Paul Crone and I am running for the office of Hancock County Commissioner. I believe that our county commissioners should provide a gateway for citizens to have an open and constructive forum for exchanging ideas, questions, and insights regarding the current issues. In our county, by working together, the Board of County Commissioners can utilize this important feedback to generate meaningful solutions for county issues. For example, since the floods in 2007 and 2008, our community has spent over $11 million, largely to study a very limited number of options for solving this problem. At the November defeat of the sales tax levy for a new justice center and county building was a loud statement that the voters believed that the Hancock County leadership did not provide a clear and convincing plan to address these issues. I believe that the voters felt that the conversation around these and other issues were not being delivered to the stakeholders through an open and public dialogue. I know that there are numerous organizations and many people who are engaged in trying to find answers to these issues, too often behind the scenes and out of the public eye. There are very good conversations taking place among community leaders about working together and collaborating to solve issues confronting Hancock County. These conversations need to more fully engage the citizens, businesses, organizations, and communities throughout the county, helping these groups to step forward and voice their concerns and ideas so we can work collaboratively on solutions to benefit all while bringing more transparency to the workings of Hancock County.
Mr. Bechtel.
Thank you. I'd like to express my appreciation to the American Association of University Women, UFTV, The Courier, WFIN for bringing us together this evening to discuss these issues affecting this countywide race. My name is Tim Bechtel and I am very honored to have been appointed a Hancock County Commissioner from a field of nine qualified candidates in November of 2016 by our own Hancock County Republican Party. I'm running for this election at this time to validate their selection of me just over a year ago. I'm a native of Northwest Ohio, having grown up in a small village along the banks of the Maumee River in Henry County. I've lived in Ohio my entire life and spent each summer of my youth at my grandparents' farm. Professionally, I'm a registered architect. In fact, I am the only known architect to be serving the public as a Hancock -- as a county commissioner. That's important because county government needs the kind of team-building skills, creative solutions, and problem-solving that only an architect like myself can bring to the table. I've earned architectural degrees from both Ohio State and Kent State, and I was appointed -- or after I was appointed, I voluntarily left my position with the architectural firm that I was with well before retirement age in order to devote my full attention and offer up the best years of my professional life to my work as a county commissioner. For the 25 years that I have been living in Hancock County, I've volunteered my time and talents to a variety of local charities. In that time, I've built so many well-respected professional relationships by working together with folks on projects. I'm a fiscal and moral conservative. I live my life after the example of Christ, and I'm a proud father of two wonderful sons, one at Finley and one at Corey Rossin.
All right. That will be our bell. That'll be a new feature of this forum. Well, because Mr. Crone had the first opening statement, we'll start with Mr. Bechtel with our first question of tonight. The county facing a tight budget due to rising safety costs. What do you believe that the best way to get out in front of this issue is before it gets out of hand?
Regarding safety costs, there are a whole host of factors that come into play. First and foremost, obviously, there is our law enforcement with Sheriff Heldman and our overcrowded jail capacity. We have heard the story here this morning that Putnam County is in a good financial situation, partly because they have a higher sales tax than we do, and also partly because they have a larger jail, that they are -- we are actually paying them to house some of our prisoners, along with two other counties. We have to be ever vigilant to the knees of the Sheriff's Department and work with them on their budget and try to stay ahead of that as best we can.
Okay. Mr. Crone?
I believe that our county is like most counties in the nation, challenged economically. We're asking our county to do more with less. We're asking our safety budgets to do more with less. I think it's just very important that we're very open with the community about the needs of the different divisions, not only safety but throughout the county, and work always toward efficiency, toward bringing with the use, like most private businesses do, with the use of technology, with the use of creative ways to meet our budgets, and then if the additional funds are needed, we have to make a very good case for the community and put that case in front of the community to meet those needs.
All right. Second question, I'll have that, and then Steve will have the next two. We have talked a little bit about the current financial issues being blamed about the opioid -- or on the opioid epidemic. Do you believe that to be the case, and how can the county better manage that situation? Or if it's not the case, what's the most major contributor to the budget issues that we see? Mr. Crone, we'll start with you.
I believe that the budget -- the opioid crisis is a significant part of the budget issue at this point, at least on the justice side of the county. I'd like to say that this is a local, it's a state, and a national issue. The issue has divided our community between those who see it as a health crisis and those who believe that it is a criminal crisis. This either-or approach sets the stage for damaging the community beyond repair. So, again, related to the budget, we have to be open. We're going to have to solve some of the community issues related to this crisis at the community level. A lot of them cannot be resolved at the county budget level.
Mr. Bechtel.
The opioid crisis affects so many different departments and agencies within the county, and not only the county but the city. I agree with much of what Paul has to say about this. When we have an arrest, it affects not only the courts but the probation departments in many cases, the children and family services, foster care. It just cascades down through all sorts of avenues that are affected by the county budget. What we can do to solve that is think proactively. Hancock County, in as bad a situation we are in with the opioid crisis, is actually doing very well compared to other areas of the state. So, we're working together. There are more professionals in this arena, working together than ever before, and I applaud them for their efforts.
Okay. Next question, and we'll start with you, Mr. Bechtel. It's a two-part question. Hancock County Jobs and Family Services is seeing increased demand in its foster care and elder abuse programs as a result of the opioid epidemic. To keep up, the agency is seeking a tax issue on the May ballot. The first part of the question is, do you support the issue? And the second part is, in the event it would be defeated, do you think the county should increase funding for the agency to help it keep up with the demand?
First off, I do support the issue. They are far behind on foster care payment rates. They've not been able to raise their foster care payment rates for something close to 20 years. There are other institutional-type settings where certain children with special needs are costing an extraordinary amount of money as well. So, yes, it is an issue that I believe our county needs to get behind because it is real. As far as if it were to be defeated, unfortunately, we had a significant unfunded portion to our budget in their line item here this past year, part of the over $800,000 that we were not able to fund across the budget. We need to find a way to fund them whether this is defeated or not, but we hope it passes.
Okay, Mr. Crone.
Okay. The current 1.2 mil Job and Family Services levy represents the intense pressure that the drug crisis and the criminal crisis is placing on our social services in the community. I do support that levy, but I do believe that we have to look beyond that levy. We have to look to the sources of some of our issues, and I hope we'll get to more of that as this conversation moves along. One of the questions that the community is asking related to this is, should this levy be supported as a sales tax or should it be supported as a property tax as it is now placed on the ballot? The difference is -- can be looked at from this point of view. About 50% of a sales tax revenue comes from outside of the county. The property tax is tonally borne by county residents and also particularly some of the larger businesses.
Okay. Next question, and we'll stick with you, Mr. Crone, first. There's been much discussion about the needs of the juvenile and probate court over the last couple of years. Some renovations are getting done. What else do you believe needs to happen to secure the future of that building?
The juvenile court is part of the larger county justice administrative building issue, and the November defeat of the sales tax levy, I think, was a loud statement that the voters believed the Hancock County leadership did not provide a clear plan to address these issues. The Board of County Commissioners have the responsibility to communicate a clear and unified message to the community regarding the needs for additional space, including the probate area and support services. I intend to do that. I believe there is a need for additional facilities, public defenders, probation officers, others related to the justice system. I am committed to providing the support, the community conversations required to understand and define these needs, and determine cost-effective solutions to meet them. Our own law enforcement officials are working daily, just like other communities across the nation, to consider cost-effective solutions. We need to support them.
Mr. Bechtel.
Probate and juvenile court is in a building that has been used by multiple tenants, including The Courier, over the course of its building life. It is not the perfect location for the future, of the long-term future of the probate and juvenile court, but we are in the process of renovating it as an answer to the community's concerns about us living within our means. There's already been security updates to that building as far as the entry of the public coming into the front, but there's a much larger need for separating the public access through the middle of the building and the staff access through the back of the building. On a larger scale, they eventually need to have another home, but that does come with funding, and we will have to determine how that funding is best generated because we cannot go into a new building project now with the current funds that we have.
Okay. This question is kind of divided based on current statuses as the incumbent and challenger. So, last year, the Commissioners initially proposed putting several tax issues in front of voters. When the dust cleared, just one remained, and that would have funded a jail expansion and jail updates as well as a new county office building. The issue was soundly rejected. Now, in hindsight, Tim, what, if anything, could have been done to make that issue more palatable to voters? And Paul, if you'd been a Commissioner last year, what have you proceeded with that tax issue or issues? We'll start with you, Mr. Bechtel.
Sure. This has been a lot of conversation in the community, and I've heard the responses. There were -- all of the issues that we placed on that quarter percent that was essentially for 20 years was everything that we had laid out in front of us from all the different departments. It included the record storage facility that is still much needed. It included, obviously, the new court for the probate and juvenile court. It included a significant improvement to the jail. We took that to the voters last fall as you would a homeowner going to the bank to find out how much money you could actually borrow in order to find out what kind of house you could build or buy. We know now that we could have separated that into smaller projects. I think that would have been more palatable, and I would suggest that that's what we would have to do in the future.
Mr. Crone.
This issue, again, came as a blank check to the voters of the community. I believe the county commissioners, I believe that it was perceived as, "Give us a blank check, and we will decide what to do with it." I think the communities, the conservative voters in this community, want to know that the county has a plan. I -- this is not a -- I do not believe that the voters do not believe there's an issue. There is an issue. They need to see a plan for the facility. They need to see where it's going to go and what the need is clearly placed in front of us as voters. And that was not done, and I do not believe the county commissioners were a solid voice along with the Justice Center, the sheriff, and the folks behind that issue that had the need.
I'll ask a follow-up for both of you on that. And Tim, it sounds like you have a rebuttal, so maybe you'll answer it here. What then is the first step in that process of trying to take this to the voter in a more palatable fashion? I guess we'll start with you, Mr. Bechtel, here.
Well, we have to be very sensitive to our security needs of these facilities. If anyone in the community thinks we're going to publish a floor plan for the jail for public inspection, that's like giving the plans to a bank, out to the public. We're not going to be able to do that for security reasons. To a certain extent, it also is true with the court system. There are security features in that floor plan that we can just not make public knowledge. We can give site plans, and certainly that can be developed, but for that expertise in those specific design areas, there's cost involved, costs that we would have to be taking out of some other area that we're already not able to fund in our current budget in order to develop those plans. So, the next step would be to find a way to generate funds to develop those, at least, site plans and more detailed cost estimates. We did produce a -- an itemized list of the breakdown for the November ballot.
Okay. Mr. Crone, same question to you.
Yes, I guess I would contest that the public doesn't need to see any plan for the building. Ultimately, when a plan Ultimately, when a building is finally designed, you will have parts of that that you do not share with the public. I understand that. But there are models of different facilities that fit footprints that can be revealed to the public. They're out there on the public. They're being used in communities all across the country to build jails. I believe that we need to know that. Plus, I think we have an obligation and a right to know what specific are the needs, some of the inside issues. We cannot become a part of that solution as a community when so much of this is treated as inside knowledge, something that we as a voter or we as consumers are somehow not entitled to. I believe we are entitled to that.
All right. I'm going to call an audible on the question list, so just accordingly. Let's talk about open meetings, then. I believe we'll start with Mr. Kron. How can the public be better addressed of situations like this or others? What would be the plan to do that?
We have the Center for Civic Engagement, which is a part of this, actually, presentation today, and the Community Foundation, the United Way have all worked together to create the very framework that we need for community collaboration in this community. It's a very young organization. It's growing. It has the support of the leadership of the community. This is the kind of organization, and this is the kind of issues, that need to be brought in front. In small community gatherings, put your information together, get it out and use the media, use the opportunities to speak in the media, and let the community know what's going on. Small task force groups. There's a lot of intelligence, and there's a lot of very strong leadership outside of the city and county government that can participate in these plans.
Mr. Bechtel.
The Commissioners have open meetings every Tuesday and Thursdays, usually at 9:30 in the morning. I know, Doug, you are usually there. Jim is usually there from the Courier. Very few other public members come. It's available, and then also, I know that in the past, the past Boards of Commissioners have had satellite meetings at different villages on occasion, and I am open and welcoming to that opportunity as well. Everyone who has come in contact with the Commissioners' office since I've been in office knows I have a very open-door policy. If you have a question and you've come to the Commissioners' office and you want to express that, if I'm there and available, I will speak to you. Likewise, with the other two Commissioners, we are open to doing these other meetings at convenient locations. The Center for Civic Engagement hosted us for our State of the County, for example. So, we are not opposed to any type of off-site meetings.
Okay, next question, and we'll start with you, Mr. Bechtel. The responsibilities of a Commissioner are many, from managing a $26 million budget to making appointments to serve on important boards and committees. The job of a Commissioner is a full-time job. Is it time for Hancock County to employ a full-time administrator to coordinate all the county departments, or are there better ways?
There is opportunities for someone in a more of a coordinating standpoint. I don't know that we, as a board, are ready to devote the financial resources to do a county administrator, partly because of our budget constraints. In the more recent past year, this past year, in two different situations, we've had a county operations coordinator that has worked out very well for us, as far as someone who can be the point person, no matter which Commissioner is available on a project. I want to take a very active role, a very full-time active role as a Commissioner. I want to be available any day of the week to work on any project that comes across my desk, but a single point source for us is advantageous.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kron.
The Board of County Commissioners was established originally to provide financial oversight to counties in a time when community government was a lot smaller and less complex. As the county government has taken on economic development, workforce, and a lot of other different functions outside of the other elected officials in it, the role of Board of Directors, to use an analogy, has become much more of a three-headed CEO, with individuals with varying experiences running the kind of business activities that I just mentioned. Around 75% of the counties in Ohio currently hire a professional manager to oversee the county operations. I do support the hiring of a county manager, largely because that individual has a kind of accountability and a kind of continuity that the revolving door of a county, the inherent revolving door of county Commissioners does not have.
Okay. Moving on to the next question, and we'll start with you, Mr. Kron. Now that the Blanchard River benching project has started in Finley, what do you believe the county's role in flood mitigation should be?
I was active in supporting, in 2009, the levy to provide the funds to fund the solution to flooding issues. Again, we've spent over $11 million since that time. To be very clear, I do not support assessing watershed and county residents for a $100 million-plus project that would require the acquisition of over 2,000 acres of valuable, productive agricultural ground and family homes largely by imminent demand. I do support benching the railroad project that is in the very beginning. I support the purchase and clearing of additional flood properties, raising the approaches to the Martin Luther King Bridge to assure access across all the river at all times, and I support expanding existing areas that already flood into larger basins that serve not only flood, but water quality and recreational uses.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bechtel.
By state statute, the county Commissioners are not required to provide flood mitigation services. In Hancock County, we have been in that situation because of the opportunity to raise those funds through the sales tax. At the end of this year, that sales tax will expire. Unless there is another effort of bringing another source of funding to that, the county's funding source will expire with the sales tax. I agree with Paul on several of the issues about what can be done. Citizens United for a Better Blanchard was just in to meet with us last week, and they talked about expanding the benching projects across multi-counties and treating it more like a ditch project, which is a very creative way of thinking about solving the flooding issue. But any of these smaller projects are only going to result in a smaller result, and they're not going to fix the major flooding problem that still is out there.
All right. With that said, we've reached the halfway point of tonight's forum. We'll take a two-minute break when we come back. Still plenty more questions to be asked, so stick with us here as we continue to talk to the Hancock County Commissioners on 1330 WFIN and UFTV.
Ohio and the surrounding areas. For over 50 years, Wasbrough Rental Property has helped residents find the right apartment to fit their needs. Go to the ShermanHouse.net for more rental information, or call 419-423-8321. Wasbrough is proud to support the Finley Media Network.
Because life is busy, and Union Bank understands that. So, when I can't make it to the branch, I can still bank on my time. They offer a mobile app so I can pay bills on my cellphone, mobile deposit so I can deposit a check with the click of a phone or tablet, and ATMs where I need them. Union Bank knows what I need. Go to the UBank.com to find out how they can help you too. Your community bank. Union Bank. Member FDIC.
Wasbrough Rental Properties, a family-owned and operated residential rental company serving Finley, Ohio and the surrounding areas. For over 50 years, Wasbrough Rental Property has helped residents find the right apartment to fit their needs. Go to the ShermanHouse.net for more rental information, or call 419-423-8321. Wasbrough is proud to support the Finley Media Network.
Hancock County Commissioners Forum. I'm Doug Jenkins with Steve Dillon. We're talking to the Republican candidates running in the primaries this May for Hancock County Commissioners. We've already had half of our forum, and we'll continue now. We'll stay on the issue of flood mitigation to a degree. I believe that Mr. Bechtel has the first response on this one. Is the county doing enough to fix smaller, non-EPA regulated flood issues? What steps do you believe are being taken, or why or why not?
Yes, we are actively involved with Soil and Water, the Blanchard River Watershed Partnership as well. After 20-plus years of waiting, Dazzle Ditch is finally under a cleaning project, which will help the north end of Finley drain better. Just tremendous overgrowth, and to a certain extent, there's been a tremendous overgrowth throughout the entire river basin. The log-clearing projects in the past have been prescribed to put the logs back along the banks. As we move forward, we're moving away from that practice. Even though everyone else seems to be doing it, it's not the right thing to do here for Hancock County. Those logs eventually wash back into the stream. So, yes, we are making great progress with funds available, again.
Mr. Kron.
I have an agricultural background, and I have a number of friends that are in the agricultural community. Outside of the Finley community, there are a large mileage of ditches, and community ditches, that date way beyond anybody in Finley's memory, and back to a time when everyone understood the need to keep those ditches clean and open for the agricultural purposes that they serve, and also for some of the flooding purposes they serve. In talking with some of the townships throughout the community, there's a hesitancy on the part of the townships to feel that they are being supported at this time in their efforts, because less and less people understand the importance or the mechanisms for funding and financing the cleaning of those ditches that are outside of the regular waterway in our community.
Okay. Mr. Kron, we'll start with you on our next question. Hancock Public Health is looking for a new headquarters. What role should the county play in financing the move or buying an existing building or the construction of a new one?
I think, again, this is a city-county partnership, as it took about 20 years to get to that point. Finally, we are there, like we perhaps should be with a number of other divisions of our city and county. Now, these two, both entities, need to work together, the county Commissioners and the city mayor and council, to provide the funding for that facility. For other facilities, we're developing some, actually, open retail space in the community that could lend itself to meeting some of the other facility needs in the county, because the Health Department is a department that we can anticipate will be here for a long time. I believe that they do need a permanent facility. At this point in time, the remodeling of existing facilities is much more cost-effective than trying to build a new facility.
Mr. Bechtel.
I agree, to a certain extent, they do need a permanent home, and they do need to be in a purchased facility. When they approached the county Commissioners about how to fund that project, again, we shared with them our budget constraints. When we suggested them to speak to the city, it was on the basis of a win-win possibility of a situation. If the city had sufficient funds to lend them that at a higher interest rate than what they were getting in their savings, it would be advantageous for the city, and it would be advantageous for the Health Department, because they would not be going to a bank to even get a higher interest rate. So, there's ways that we can work together on this. I know that in private practice, prior to being a Commissioner, I think I've designed three or four different locations for that Health Department, between the city and the county health departments before their merger. So, a permanent home would be so advantageous for the entire community.
The Commissioners were unable to fund their portion of the Raise the Bar Employment Initiative this budget cycle. Do you believe it is important that the county fund this or other projects like it? Why or why not? We'll start with you, Mr. Bechtel.
Yes, I do believe it's important that we fund Raise the Bar, and the work that they do in helping us to improve our workforce development in Hancock County, not just in the city of Finley, but throughout the county, is vitally important to our future. Regrettably, we were unable to fund that among, again, over $800,000 worth of requests in the last budget cycle. I believe in the next year, even though we foresee an even greater challenge with our budget projections, we must find a way to at least partially fund Raise the Bar going forward.
I'd like to address this from maybe a little bit larger issue. The cornerstone of the American dream is the opportunity to be employed in a meaningful occupation that provides a sustainable living wage and a sense of personal accomplishment. New and existing businesses are struggling to find enough workers in our community. The Center for Civic Engagement, which I mentioned before, and the Raise the Bar are organizations that are working hard to meet the need to provide these workers, but they need the support not only of the county Commissioners and the city and the Alliance organizations, they need the support and the understanding of the larger community. At the same time, we're struggling for workers. The 2015 United Way report noted that almost 40% of the Hancock County households in the more populated communities, while employed, have very limited resources or remain in poverty. The Job and Family Services is part of that. We need to help fund, basically, the organizations that will meet that need.
Okay. Next question, and we'll start with you, Mr. Kron. In addition to Raise the Bar, what additional role should the county Commissioners play in economic development, if any?
The economic development in all the counties, and one of the things in my current career is attending the Economic Development and Chamber meetings for most of the communities around Hancock County, as well as within Hancock County. And each of these counties basically function as a partnership between the city government or local government, if it is, and the county government to do the economic development work of the county. It is important that the county Commissioners fund and participate and help with that role in this county going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Bechtel.
Economic development is vitally important to Hancock County, and over the past four years, it has produced great results. Top metropolitan community in the nation, four years in a row, speaks volumes. The county Commissioners divide our time between Convention and Visitors Bureau, Economic Development, the Alliance, and Chamber, in all, to cover the widest range of issues that are affecting economic development. How we can better participate is just to be supportive in what economic development does. Tim Miley and his staff do a tremendous job of attracting new businesses through the Finley Forum, or the Finley Formula, and I am personally very supportive of that going forward to the future.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, our next question about litter landing. Right now, it seems to be in a bit of a holding pattern. Where should the county's recycling program be on the priority list, and what are things that can be done to enhance it? Mr. Bechtel, we'll start with you.
Litter landing, like so many other programs, is evolving over time. It's not the same as it was when they first built that building, and it's certainly not the same operation it was when they first occupied that site. As we move forward with their operations, we are piece by piece getting better equipment to handle the recycling materials. We certainly are always looking for more staff for that facility to make it run more efficiently. We're examining the hours that are available, and also the remote recycling stations that we have throughout the county. We're always keeping track of what's happening with those and how to better improve that so that each area of the county has adequate coverage for recycling. Recycling helps our landfill not fill up as quickly, so that's very important.
Mr. Cron?
This is one of the kind of sidelines of the county commissioners that has been taken on over the years to meet a valuable need in the community. I would question whether this could not be privatized and would not need to be run under the county facilities and the county operations. I think the private industry has maybe a better way to communicate with the citizens. They have a more efficient way quite often to run or manage a business. And I believe that privatization of this facility and perhaps taking a good look at some other operations to privatize them could be a better solution to this.
We'll allow for a rebuttal here.
Yes, there's already private recyclers in town in the area that certainly would take anyone's business. They're certainly going to charge for that. There are certain restrictions, though I believe we'd have to have the prosecutor's office determine for us whether we could abandon litter landings altogether from a county operations standpoint.
Mr. Cron, any response to that as well?
Well, again, I question why the government creates a business to compete against private sector.
All right. Well, with that in mind, I'm going to call another audible. I don't mean to give Tom Brady on you tonight, but I guess that's what we're going to do. We've talked a little bit about some ways that government talks or works in private sector operations, litter landing being one, economic development being another. As you're running for the Republican nomination, some of those types of policies may not sit well with perhaps more of a conservative base, or a harderline conservative base. How do you balance things like funding economic development with the balance of how does that affect the private sector, or is the private sector a better way to go about that? And we'll start with Mr. Cron.
Okay. To, I'm sorry, just repeated this.
I'm sorry, that was a rambling question. I'll try and summarize it for you. Some of the things that we've discussed tonight, as far as the county being involved, the government being involved in economic development, or litter landing per se, may not sit as easy with a more staunch conservative. How do you balance that with your campaign and your beliefs?
All right. Very definitely, I think a tenet of the conservative Republican movement across the country and in its history is that less government is better, more support for private industry is better. Yes, there is a part of that a single private industry cannot do to promote the entire community. So, I think the government works with the Alliance and a joint support with the members of the community, as the Alliance is funded, to promote the things that they can do or should do and that is not easily done by the private sector. Beyond that, the private sector brings a tremendous amount of efficiency to the services that they provide. And I think when we have the opportunity to encourage the investment and encourage people who are motivated by their investment, we as a government need to do that.
Mr. Bechtel?
Public-private partnerships are advantageous in certain locations and certain situations. And I believe those would have to be studied on a case-by-case basis. I can't make necessarily a blanket statement where, in one case, it would meet the needs of the other cases. I'm all for competition. I'm all for free-market enterprise. I think as often as we can, we need to provide the business sector and the private industries to provide those resources. There are only a few situations that we've talked about here tonight that the government needs to be involved. So, we follow the state statutes when they're applicable, and that is as best we can do.
Okay. Let's talk a little bit about city-county relations. Are they important? And how do you foster a working relationship? Where are the opportunities for improvement? We'll start with you, Mr. Bechtel.
I believe city-county relations are very important. I have, since being in office and even before office, strived to build good, positive relationships, professional relationships with our council people, with our city administration, as well as when I was in private practice, the county officials. From the county standpoint, though, as we talk about the city, we're also concerned about the villages and the townships as well, and how they relate to the city. There is a divide between our rural folks and our urban folks, as far as one group caring about what the other group has to say, what the other group has to think, and that goes both directions. So, I see the county commissioners and the county officials as a whole a bridge to that gap.
Mr. Cron?
In being connected through work and through our business, interaction with both the city and the county over the past 30 years, actually, that I've been active in Hancock County, behind the scenes, the city and the county function extraordinarily well together in doing the things that they need to do. Much of the discord, if you will say, is probably at the upper end of the political spectrum. Larger context, when you really think about a county that has only 75,000 residents, and a city and a county that, you know, is largely a mix of urban and rural, I believe we've drawn a lot of silos that maybe we don't need to do. And very simply, back to the probate office, to create a third security entrance, simply because we're not able to put a connection between a city building and a county building, I find, from a public point of view, is a little bit ironic.
Okay. The next question follows the same lines, and you've both touched on it a little bit already, but how do the commissioners foster and grow the relationships between the townships and the villages in the county? Sometimes I know they feel like they are left out of the equation. And we'll start with you, Mr. Cron.
Okay. I do have been to some of the villages and working with some of the villages, and they do feel fairly, and the townships as well, feel fairly disconnected from time to time from what goes on in the city and even in the county government inside of the city. One, I think we don't promote the villages, and we don't promote the townships, and an understanding of how important they are within the total ecosystem, if you would, of Hancock County. The villages are vibrant places that could become exciting places to live. The townships and the agricultural community is just a huge part. We have a large agribusiness economy in Hancock County that no one knows about. And I think a lot of this is us bringing these two together and promoting all of it as one large community.
Thank you. Mr. Bechtel?
With a population of nearly 75,000 and about 45% of those folks living outside of the city limits of Finley, there is a vast array of folks that live in the townships that aren't necessarily farming, first of all. They live in private residential lots out in the country because they enjoy that setting. And that's great. That's how I grew up and for part of my childhood in Henry County. But those folks have a disconnect even to township politics in some cases. So, I believe county commissioners, as well as the other county elected officials, again, can provide that bridge, can provide that connection. And of course, there's some neighborhood competition between some of the villages, because in many cases, they're sports competitors as well. But that's all friendly, and I think it's good.
Thank you. All right. We've reached the end of our question-and-answer portion of tonight's forum. We'll move now into the closing statements, and Mr. Bechtel will have two minutes for his closing statement tonight. We'll turn the floor to you.
It is a great day in Hancock County, a new day. And we are making notable progress in so many areas of life here. In my first year in office, we've got a good thing going on, and we need to keep it going. Through the Finley Forum, we have earned the distinction of the top metropolitan community in the nation for the fourth year in a row. After so many years of investigation and planning by other folks before I took office, we are now actually beginning the first river capacity improvement project in Finley. After waiting over 20 years, as I mentioned before, the Dazl Ditch Project is finally getting a good, proper cleaning. We have a monumental challenge in front of us with the opioid epidemic. But I can see how our local experts, who are working together better than ever before, can bring us out of this darkness of this addiction. They know they have my support. Each commissioner brings his or her own unique set of skills and talents to the office. And in these coming years, when county facility improvement projects will be no longer unavoidable, the skills I offer freely to the county as an experienced architect are like none other. We need an architect's experience and expertise on the board to coordinate various contractors, engineers, building officials, and most importantly, to inform the public so that we can show them a clear way to move forward, exactly what they've been asking for. My first year in office has been an extraordinary experience for me. It has given me the opportunity to help more folks on a whole new level. I am passionate about what I've been called to do as a county commissioner, and I'm excited about the new developments coming our way with the business community, and I wholeheartedly stand with our agribusiness families, the heart of our county. I appreciate everyone's support in my campaign for to be elected in May 8.
I am the candidate and leader who is willing and able to do the work of gathering ideas, concerns, insights, and questions that will lead to providing better and more efficient solutions to the county's pressing issues. Listening and gathering ideas is only the beginning. I will work to bring the stakeholders and their perspectives together to move the concerns into the public arena. This primary election is a referendum on the opportunity for the citizens and stakeholders to be more engaged in the future of our community. As engaged citizens, we need to ask questions. We need to raise our expectations. We need to expect collaboration, transparency, and leadership. We need to expect to be heard and expect answers. To recap my points from this evening, I am not a supporter of the larger dry basins. I am a supporter of other ongoing efforts in alternate basins in areas that already flood. I believe that the drug and opioid crisis represents a disastrous health issue for the impacted residents of the community, and the criminal justice issue is an equally important parallel issue related to protecting our community from the outside forces that are bringing drugs into Hancock County. My entire career has been spent working with individuals, businesses, communities, and local government services in many different capacities. And as a county commissioner, I will continue to bring all of these groups to the table to put together a solid plan for the future of our county to meet our expectations. To be fair, I think the county has a lot of incredibly good things going forward. I do not think we are ready to be satisfied with the things and where we're at. You can visit my website at paulcron2018 to learn more about my background, experience, and campaign. I do thank you for your time tonight, and hope you will consider voting for Paul Cron for Hancock County Commissioner on May 8.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. And thank you to everybody who's helped out tonight and for joining us tonight. I'd also like to thank UFTV for televising this forum. You can catch it on their YouTube channel, as well as coverage in The Courier. And of course, you've been able to listen at WFIN at 1330 and 95.5 FM. Also, a special thanks to the AAUW Finley branch for helping out with tonight's forum, and of course, to the University of Finley Center for Civic Engagement for hosting us. And most of all, thanks to you who watched and listened. We hope that what you heard tonight has solidified your sense of the candidates. I'm Doug Jenkins, wishing you good night for Steve Dillon and everybody else from the University of Finley. (Music) 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 (Music)